I'm like, three dollars. I'm like, oh. Sorry. My left's too high in my chat. Sorry. What did you say? I'm saying no one's drunk yet. Uh, I just want to wait and check. Sorry. Well, I don't know how to let you know, but.
I'm trying to text to the people on my, from my work.
Just took all the time to do that. And people here that can say that no decisions were made in that executive session. So now we begin to part, uh, reports with. The blonde lady in the first row, Liz Jordan.
Hello. Uh, just show them where I am. So summer camp ended, it ran from July 8th.
Sorry, are you going to display the document?
This document.
The Department needs to report.
Your support. There it is.
I'll start reading when it pops up. So a camp went from July 8th to August 16th. We had 233 campers registered for camp, 53 in the five through six, 64 in the seven through 10, 3, 51 in ages nine through 10, and 62 in ages 11 to 13. That's a lot for the oldest age groups. We're really excited about that. Of course, they don't all show up every single day. That would be a lot. Some of them are only registered to come for like one week out of the summer. Some of them come every single day. Some of them are only there on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, whatever it might be. But we had pretty good attendance. It was great summer. It was really good. Staff and campers all said, but Sam, that it felt like a really good summer. Everyone was really happy with all of, with everything. We were able to run our bike call up all summer. We were able to bring in a bunch of programmers, department of several organizations in the area. And we went on five field trips and we brought back swimming lessons this year to campers and community. The field trips, campers were offered the opportunity to partake in three field trips for age group. So our youngest camper went bowling one day while our oldest campers went to putt and plus. They all went to urban air. And the big trip was the younger kids went to Zoom Bloom and the older kids went to Great Escape. There's the numbers there on field trips. We're really excited to offer all the field trips this year. The funding for the bus comes from the county, which is really great. The new helps to pay for some of those fees for the trips to ease the money towards the families so they didn't have to pay quite as much. We had programs this summer from Columbia Land Conservancy, Sky High Farms, Brindlesith After School Service, Sylvia Center, Hudson Area Library, Scott Game Sports, beautiful racket, racket canoeing with Peter. It's just a volunteer, so doesn't have a name for his thing. Beautiful or butterfly eyes nature program. And like I said, our bike call up. We also had a local fisherman volunteer to come in and take the kids fishing before the bloom. Yeah, so when we weren't having programming, our staff were working with the kids. Camper's got the opportunity to ride bikes at least twice a week. And our lead mechanic actually taught 15 kids how to ride bikes from the US to the oldest age groups. That was something that she taught. It was really something to see. I've never seen someone teach something with such skill. And actually had one parent that I saw outside of camp who was so grateful because they've been struggling to teach their daughter how to ride a bike. And they were just like, it's not gonna happen. And then Erin Tucker, how to ride a bike again today. Yeah, listing all the activities they did. They had a lot to do. They caught frogs, they went on hikes, they learned to dribble, they learned basketball, they learned cooking. Some of the older kids did crafting for money at the library where they then went to waterfront Wednesday and sold the crafts that they made and then they got to keep the money. So there's some photos of some of the programming. And then just some more stuff. It was, it was a lot of fun. The swimming lessons we brought back. So we were, first time brought it back since COVID. We were really excited about that. The issue had been, people weren't certified to teach, but we did have some people that were certified this summer. It was really great. With community campers combined, we had 90 kids sign up for swimming lessons this summer. We're hoping to increase that next year. We're also, yeah, we're just really committed to getting swimming lessons back up, getting as many people into it as we can because we're thinking it's such an important skill, especially with the resource of the lake right there. We want to make sure everybody's safe when they are at the lake using the water. And then there's just more. Kids in the water, but that's a lot of fun. I am going to take the time to read this next slide because I think it's important. I don't want to miss anyone. So summer camp ended with annual beach party. The campers got to show up. They're still at the town show. They have full accounts or two into the water pit. It's by the war. We are so grateful to everyone who made this summer a once remembered. So the campers should make it all worth it and the families that support them getting to camp every day. To the counselors and lifeguards who show up daily and put their all into making it a great and safe experience for campers. To the programmers who offer such amazing meaningful programming to our campers with enthusiastic and friendly facilitators. To the admin team of the department who goes above and beyond managing everything behind the scenes to ensure that safe, functional and fun season is happening. To Comey County DSS and Proms Neighborhood who help us secure our transportation. To HPD for showing up whenever we needed them, whether it was just to hang out or help us with any issues that came up. To Brenton Hudson News who help make so much of what we do possible. And to Mayor Johnson, let's stop by regularly and hang out at the camp. Can't say thank you enough to everybody. Thank you. Community engagement stuff. We were at a couple of community engagement events. We did National Night Out organized by Chief Franklin and William as well. So thank you so much. Our staff had a lot of fun and actually to meet a lot of people that has made things happen there. We also had a fun time at the Hudson Block Party. And that was really great by Greater Hudson Proms Neighborhood. We were able to register some kids for after school program. We also did the local kickball tournament, but I didn't put any pictures in because we lost pretty badly and I didn't. Just a couple of things about Oakdale Park. So I'm sure you noticed the posted signs that went up on the trail behind the park connecting Spring Street to Seven Street. We were surprised and deterred to see those signs go up. Not only the back trail, section, section trail major part of what we utilize at Oakdale for our programs, but it's also in front of the community who uses it to get back and forth. Working with the mayor's office who's getting in touch with the mayor's office to try and get a meeting with National Grid. Sounds like they're trying to get a survey done. And we had a survey on our end that we're trying to get, see what we can do. But having access to that trail and maintaining the resources that it offers are really important to us in the city. And so we are working on it. And we're going to continue to work on it until we figure something out because that's a huge part of it. And want to make sure that we can keep it. We've been maintaining it for a long time and utilizing it for a long time. So hopefully we can find a way to bring it back into legal use. Um, other than at Oakdale Park that you might have noticed, so the lake got shut down. There was an algae bloom that came in. The Department of Health actually tested it late last week and over the weekend. I did get a notice that the bloom head is clear. I do want to say a few things about it anyway. So we have continued testing that happens there from Great Ecology and the UFI Labs that provides the testing answers, reports. They continue to train people in the community to be able to help do that testing on their own. So there's lots of people in the community that are working to just kind of manage that lake and keep an eye on it. Really grateful that people were able to spot it. Make sure everybody stays safe. I wasn't here. Mine happened, but the staff that was here managed it really well, put up the signs, got everyone out, did what they need to do. And it was really great. So unfortunately, when the moon starts, there is no treatment. You just have to wait for it to dissipate on its own. But it has dissipated around the sun, which is really great. And this is something that's been happening all over the Northeast this year. Just a combination of the weather, the temperatures, the rainfall, that's happening in a lot of places. And I think that we handled it really well. It also starts some conversations about how we might be able to head it off in the future. And I actually have a meeting with Greater Ecology later in the month to kind of brainstorm for next year. That's what we're going to do.
Liz, on that point, the aeration system, then wasn't that intended to try to grasp some of this?
Yeah, it's supposed to help. It wasn't specifically for this bloom and for some of the other stuff that is like curly weed or whatever. I'm not, I do my best to understand what they're saying. But I think with that stuff, it has helped a little bit because there are only four areas in a giant lake. So that might be something we discussed, like we need another one or look at that like. Yeah, we're going to continue with regular testing to kind of, so. The youth department soccer league started over Labor Day weekends. And we'll be going through like October. We've got participants from kindergarten through sixth grade because at seventh grade they can go and modify. So we want to give them a building program. We had 112 players sign up this year, which is 26 players more than we had last year, which we're really excited about. The level of play has been really cool. We had our first games last weekend. It was awesome. They're like, really good. We're doing it a little differently this year because it's hard with, you know, there's so many other things happening. Rather than having set teams, we just have all of the kids from the age group practice together and we split them into teams each week so they get a different level of competition each week. And it's not stuck on one team, you know, dominating the other or something like that. They all get together together. So we're excited about that. We are going to release our youth department basketball league registration by the end of this month so that people can get started registering for that because that one, we do get a lot of kids and we cannot add people after the fact. It's just too difficult because we have the teams split up and everything. So that's going to be out for like two and a half to three months to give everyone ample time. So when you guys come out, if you can share it with everybody, you can share it for your board if you want to. Let everybody know. Register early enough, you might get put on as a mayor's team, you might be a coach. I'm not coaching this year, so you'll have to settle for the, um, nursing. Um, I swear I have a slide out after school program, but I don't see it. So I apologize for that. Our school program started today. Our numbers aren't as high yet. Go ahead and do a rolling registration. So I'm sure in a few weeks it'll be up and I'll show the numbers as they kind of got it up here.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions from council?
Has the kitchen been updated? You guys for kind of drastic remodel?
There was a grant that was kind of gotten for us, but then there's a lot of work that needs to go into it. And so we're looking at and evaluating the product to see in all honesty, if it's worth it in the building. That doesn't fully meet our needs in other ways to invest that kind of money because it is something that we could put towards a different project with a different location should we choose to. So we're kind of like.
But what is, what is the deadline for that?
There's no deadline.
Oh, yeah.
And how much is it?
I think it was like 20,000. I did the double check.
Could you, okay, yeah.
Other questions? Where's the soccer being done? Is that the town park?
Oh, no, I left that part out. It's in the report that I should not say. We actually partnered with the school this year. So the kids are playing their games on the turf field.
On Sundays? Okay, because I saw people there. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, if you want to stop by on Saturday, how about? We're practicing on the modified fields and the grass, but they have to play in the turf field, which is really cool. Really good playing varsity.
And then, um, have you thought about doing that, what, you know, we used to do at campus at the end is satisfied, what they call satisfactory survey? So, you know, to the family so they can do, you know, positive, you know, what works, what, you know, a good feedback, right?
Yeah, positive reconstructive feedback, yeah.
Right. And then there might be some ideas too. Some, some people say, you know, what about, you know, this and that? And, you know, so I don't know if you ever thought about doing.
We sent it out last year at the end of camp to every single family that registered. I think we got saved back. I don't think we did it this year with the family law, the double check because Calum was running the camp and I was actually away on the last day. I know we did it with our staff to make sure that we're getting feedback from them. But I'm not sure if we sent out to anyone. But it's, it's hard because we tried to do it for after school program as well. You know, we send it out, we have a link when people show up, but.
Yeah.
Don't always want to share.
And what about the numbers? How many were out of, out of the city in terms of the campers? What percentage were?
I didn't have time to look at the data like that because like I said, it was away for part of camp, but I can get that information.
And there, there was one, one more question if you got what it was, but okay.
On your end.
Thanks. Okay. That's an email.
But the county has given us some money for the camping, right?
The county pays for all of our transportation toward him. And the school provides all of our meals free of cost of loss. So there's a lot of.
That's what the question was. So you said that the tennis is a little lower. Have you reached out to the families to see if it's lower because they're attending the school now that they opened their school program?
I think it's just lower because people have not taken the time to register. And because we had like emptied shops today that were actually registered and their parents were like, we registered last year. So we're going to do some like calling and checking in and just, it always starts a little slow.
Sure.
And then it's out.
Over to councilmen. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Liz.
Thanks very much.
And now we have a triple play from the inside of the room. We'll be quick. So we had three balls last morning, three more fires. One of them was a standby with three good intent calls, 22, 23 false alarms for a total of 30. The boat was in production as the speed should be here a minute ago, remember? Hopefully as long as everything goes plan, so that's what we're looking at. Questions from the council members? Questions from the board? Thank you, Democrat. Thank you, good night.
Sit down.
Thank you. Mia was here, but she seems not to return. So pull her off in case she comes back. In the meantime.
Per bodyboard cam reports, reports for August don't indicate any training needs at this time. Number of abuse of horse incidents were zero. The, we had 34 arrests with 70 total charges. Number of emotionally disturbed persons called were five and no calls involving drug overdoses. There was one accident involving a pedestrian on North Fifth Street. Someone on a bicycle was riding their bicycle southbound on North Fifth Street. Vehicle was also driving southbound on North Fifth Street. Didn't see the bicyclist that crossed the road. He got knocked off his bicycle. They spoke he was fine, but the pedestrian did want a police report, but no entries from that. Then we participated in a ton of events in Hudson throughout August. And it was, it was great. National Night Out, I think we spoke about that last council meeting. The block parties, there was Sancofa and also the end of year Oakdale party. And it was just, it was a good August, I would say.
Questions?
During our finance meeting, we noticed that the parking was lower. The revenues of the parking. Do you, do you best remember the finance meeting? We said during our finance meeting, remember the parking revenues were lower? We were going to ask Musanda about why. You happen to know?
So. This is the, yeah, from the ticketing.
Yeah.
So I would say that enforcement is pretty much status quo or even higher than what it has been. I think the issue comes into play that there have been no boots. And therefore people are not paying parking tickets because there's no consequence to not paying probably five, six plus hundred dollars, at least from what I have seen. So there right now has been a discrepancy in past tickets with the data transfer to T2 from passport to T2. It's something that they've been working on for the past several months. And hopefully it's, it's very minimal at this point. And it's something that I can speak with the bureau, the parking bureau also, if we can go ahead and see if those discrepancies won't affect anything else to maybe start sending out delinquent notices. That would be the next step. If those discrepancies are cleared up, then the city can start sending out delinquent notices to people prior to actually moving.
And once the delinquent notices are sent, then what happens?
So they get, I believe it's 30 days from the delinquent notice that they're able to pay, pay the fee. And then the result, I believe, will be boots because it would be past that threshold for.
It'd be nice if the, it's all.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
And then council members? Public? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see Rob, but I just tested him. So we'll give him a minute or two. Rob, are you there? Oh, move on when he comes back. I think it's important. So we have just a couple of resolutions tonight. First is finding commissioners' fees. And then introduction, second. Margaret and Tricia.
Tom?
Yes.
I don't think I put a report from the committee that we met last week.
I think, don't do that, I'll forget to do that.
But I just want to give an actual.
Yeah, why don't we just?
I forget to do it now.
No, I'll put it on my get to the law section.
Right, because we, I think we, we agreed that we should do a.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. I, I didn't send it out to you guys, but if you want to correct, you can correct.
Second resolution authorizes the mayor to execute contract with school district for roofwork related to the school resource officer. And I have an introduction in the second here. Margaret and Lauren. The third resolution authorizes, and that only with the communication workers. This will be, you'll get all the, you'll get, I think you already got the MOA and the attorney will be here next week to answer all the questions. Could I have an introduction in a second? Margaret and Lauren.
Exactly which workers are these?
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't. This is the youth department.
Okay.
And the last resolution is to transfer funds for the purchase of an LED radar speed display sign for Worth Avenue.
I have a question on this deal.
Okay. Introduction. Rob and Margaret. Yes, which is.
So these are, these are the passive speed signs, right?
It was just like the one I'm having.
So I have been working with Jason. We, we waited in a report for the truck committee on weight limits. But one of the things now that the 25 mile an hour has passed, we were looking at putting the sign on the key of the car. One on West, entrance, one on green, after you come, and then on toll path 66. And so I think I would like to take that resolution and modify it to include the, like, we should do it in all of the locations of the city. For instance, we'll say.
We haven't.
No, we, we don't have.
Oh, okay.
We, also I'll throw up. We, we were researching the size that we want to put up. One of the ones we have right now is absolutely huge. And we were looking, we were looking into costs and a bit of issues. I didn't know you were putting one up in West.
I'm sort of confused. Are you talking about the same type of machine?
I'm not sure.
You're only just talking about that one that is across from Dominic's house.
Well, there's one over there.
And there's one over there.
It's a very large one.
No, it's not the.
So what I'm talking is like, it's as we roll out 25 miles. We were looking at multiple locations around the city, including work, where we want to put them all in at the same time. And so I would like to amend that.
Why, select to combine on that?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it so that we put them in at all of the.
There we leave the same size again.
Yeah, so that we.
Right, I, right. I agree. I'm watching this.
The one at power, one on green, after you turn on the light and you're coming down right into the city. There's not like bringing it before that, because it's going down. But after they've gone past the light on nine and then obviously west. And then we were looking at one from 66 and 23. So there are multiple locations where we, and we want.
I'd like to have an input on this because I went, we went through all this for Glenwood. Remember that it has, first of all, they're not LED, they're solar. There is a big difference. Solar, it's, works fantastic, I have to say. They're smaller.
Yes.
If you know. And they are permanent. You don't have to move them, okay? They just stay there. The thing is ours, Glenwood is 25 miles per hour. We'll put that up.
Yeah.
And it's not really enforced. People go a lot faster. And it's right by my house, so it's near there. So I can see they go a lot faster. The problem you have with all these locations is usually people can go between 25 and 30. Okay, even if it is 25, I think some people can go 30. The thing is that they, they don't really go around 30. I mean, I had the speed guard and I saw how fast they go. You'll be surprised, but they don't really, they're around that time, around 25 to 30. They don't speed. It seems that they speed, but they don't speed a lot. In areas where you, where the truck route is, I think they probably do speed there because they go out of the city, you know, or when they come. But there are certain, certain areas in the city, although it appears they speed, they don't speed as much. The thing is though, I think even if we have some LED, some solar signs, what we need to do is analyze the data, which we haven't been at that point. We haven't done it in certain areas. I think we should be doing it. And then once you analyze the data is you see where there are certain times that they, you have the speeders. Usually is when they try to get work, you know, there makes sense or try to drop.
Target enforcement.
But we did have speed data in three different locations before putting.
No, but combining with the LED sign, also the solar sign, now it's not saying anything. So then you, you understand, then it has a lot of use to the machine, you know?
So the rationale for, and you're on our list to meet this, to talk about enforcement. The rationale for doing this, you know, one thing Jason and I were talking about was potentially leasing them, not necessarily having them permanently. But the rationale was as we roll out the 25 mile an hour thing, we want to make sure until people get used to it, that they are aware of the fact that the speed limit is no longer 30 miles an hour, which is why we were looking at the point at which you enter the city. So that as you're coming in, you're 25 and then, you know, but wouldn't that service be forever? Like, your area has a speeding problem.
Yes, it's, it's amazing human behavior. Like now they know where the sign is and they do speed because they know there's no consequences. So usually nothing against you guys, but the truth is you cannot have a police car there 24/7. So the best thing we can do, this, the sign, the, the solar sign is good to again analyze the data, figure out what is the time that they speed? And then the police, the police will, you guys can see that, get the data and then have a police car around that time. That's the only, the only good thing they give them. Other than that, during the day, they will do what they want to do because they don't care. There's a sign, but there are no real consequences. They need to get to work, they need to get, you know, police.
But I, I agree with you in general, if you were talking about continuous speed and it hasn't changed in terms of speed limits. But our intent, and I will be having a traffic meeting soon, you know, we can bring up these signs on that meeting. Worth is definitely on the business, that there is significant speeding over it. But what the direction now was to get education out there to people that they know that the speed limit has changed to 25.
But we're putting the sign, aren't we?
We're putting signs up, but putting something up that's more visible and visual to alert people that the speed limit within the city is now 25.
So this is what I would advise you to do. There is a battery sign, which I have another battery. I don't have it. It's down on Oakdale, on the other side of Oakdale when you get in. That is movable. Instead of going to city and buying all the signs, you can move it everywhere you want. So you can have, it's not permanently traced.
How many do we have?
And you can actually borrow that one.
Right.
And have it in different locations. And it is with a battery. You can have it three weeks.
That's the one that's very large.
No, 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 it's small. I got two ones. We have a grant from the factory. I got one, the, the solar one, which is permanent. And the other one is with a battery and it's movable. So I, I'm saying instead of going investing, it's around five grand apiece. So I, I'm saying instead of going investing, it's around five grand apiece, five.
Well, that's why I've been thinking of releasing them for a couple of months.
I don't think you can release. There is not such thing. You have to buy them, but I.
Yeah. So I think, so two things, right? I, I research and I've never caught, come across at least one. I mean, it could be, right? Unless it's a trailer one, which we know is going to be big, right? You know, so in term, in terms of also researching, Worth Avenue was on that list. In terms of the speed issues on Worth Avenue coming into the city. So also with, with the change of the speed limit, I think this is probably more appropriate now. Because the identification notification is going to be even more highlighted that the speed has changed from those areas. Additionally, you have to see what type of device you want to use because the pole has to go down so far, you've got to make sure that, you know, DPW can do that without hitting any lines. In terms of that location, that's why maybe what Vicky was saying in terms of that portable one, that can be strapped to any pole. You know, because it's portable. I think the key is collecting that data, which the company has, you know, willing to come down to educate us on how to collect the data. So we then can determine. But right now I do think that just by past research, that Worth Avenue, because it also is a trucking, is in a, a very high speed.
The one way.
And this, and then it's not explained for the other project.
So, so what you're thinking of is a permanent, permanent.
Yeah, okay. Big to have a space, the city only has a piece of property there, but it needs.
We definitely need that one. Yes, it works.
Okay, so let's go back to, if we have an introduction second, let's go back to Rob, third, you guys. Rob?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go. You're on.
I'm going for it right now. Here we go. Sharezuski. All right. Step ditch for July was $60,462. So it's a very good month by far. This just goes some more maintenance issues. This is a shoot that the sludge comes off the belt press into the trailer before it's hauled away to the sanitary landfill. Got hit by one of the trailers. A while ago, it was repaired. The repair didn't do well, so had it switched out, replaced with a new one. We also have, so there's been discussion about the sewer extension permits that are a, not a new requirement, but a newly enforced requirement, requirement from the DEC. So we did send our corrective action plan as part of the consent order. The consent order was received in May. We was, we responded in August. So DEC has approved, the most significant portion is basically giving us the approval to create the bank by which we will sell credits to developers. The money will be used to offset our engineering review as well as, you know, some of the debt service. Because, you know, the city did pay a portion of all these capital projects that created the, the bank in the first place. So that'll be a resolution before you next week, which is, it's more of a budget amendment than really anything else. But it's something you'll see next week. And then once that's approved, then we're going to move forward with the, the projects. Some of them will have to do more work than others, but, and in the end of it, it does get approved ultimately, but DEC, it is not a city issue permit. So we'll just be collecting and putting the whole packet together and then sending it off to DEC for their ultimate review.
Rob?
Yes.
Have you got, has the planning board been informed of that list?
No, because it doesn't involve the planning board.
Okay. I thought, I thought I was holding up some of the.
In the very beginning, I wanted, I, it was my dream. I put it in my letter, my request to Santa Claus to have the planning board manage this, but DEC was adamant that basically me and the city and its engineer managed the process. So it is what it is. Yep. So we have Union Street. So this is, we're about halfway through with the main. It's on the street. Obviously, we have to put the main in first, test it, make sure all the, all the joints are sound. This is actually part of a lateral service that'll be a future lateral, but they do put the stuff pieces in. And then we come back and after everything is tested, we put the, we bring the laterals over and put the main in service. And this is one of the structures, which is by Christ Church. And, you know, you see the 12 inch main and actually down in here, this little gadget, it's a, it's a pipe laser. And that's how they know. They put in a value, it's got a green dot and they measure it against a target. So each section of pipe, it manages to keep it left, right. You know, also it's vertical incline so that everything is exactly the way it's supposed to be because the tolerances for a sanitary gravity source are extremely, extremely tight. For the lasers use to make sure that there's no error, errors. We also have. You know, I guess there was an email that went around about something over on the ravine from some last year's work. You know, between the, the snow dump down Seventh Street and Oakdale. So we went over to investigate if DEC forwarded it to me for a request and what it looks like is we noticed that there's some netting. And you can see that this is all the netting is here and everything is fully intact. But in this place here, the netting appears to have been cut, which then the runoff, without going over the netting, is able to work the, the subsoil. And once it worked that out, it actually shifted structure and which broke the connection. So this does seem to be an overt act of vandalism and we have reached out to DEC. Hopefully they'll, they'll conduct a criminal investigation so that we can get to the bottom of the cause because it does not appear to be naturally occurring. The. At the water, I don't know how that got ahead of me anyway. That's a different story. Switching to the water plant. So we just had maintenance on a rotor actuator. It's basically a very smart valve. It's a pretty expensive valve too, so just maintenance on those. There are about 25 of them in the operation of the water plant. Also, we had some issues with the PLC. This is original to the plant. It's, it's almost 20 years old. You know, at, at this point it functions, but you know, we're able, funny, it's more difficult to get components for it because it is so outdated. This, something that's going to have to be fully overhauled in the next couple of years. It'll be a, it'll be a significant amount of money, probably a capital project. But you know, for now, you know, it, everything is working, you know, it works fine. The, and one of the other issues is, you know, we, we're putting about 200 gallons a day, or I'm sorry, 200,000. I'm sorry, we used to put in about a million gallons a day. We're putting about 1.3 million gallons a day. And as of the last six months or so, and you know, the plant is designed to handle 2.5, but right now the flow comes in by gravity. And there's certain processes that limit us, you know, we've got a little bit more, but not a whole lot more. So that might also be an impetus for updating the system sooner than later. All right, so now this is down on Union Street. This is an old water main that was ripped out and you can see it kind of comes like a little bottleneck and that would slip inside of the, the end of the next tree trunk. And these were poured out. This is the very earliest of water mains. Back to modern times. So we were talking about an issue with the pipe, pigsty vault as part of our maintenance and this valve here broke a year ago. So now that we've had that insertion valve that was installed last week, we're going to take this valve out, just replace it with a spool piece and then we'll put this back in service. As far as the lead service line inventory is proceeding. We've done door to door, we've done the mailers, the flyers inside of the water bills. The next step is there's still about 800 that are unknown inside the house, so those residents will receive the direct mailing from the city. Because, you know, we think some people get the water sewer bills and don't look at what's in there. Maybe a letter that comes directly, they'll be a little bit more curious and, and we can grab a couple hundred more, potentially several hundred more. You know, the reality is that whatever we don't know on October 16th, we're just going to tell Department of Health that we don't know. And every year that we have unknowns and those that are identified as lead, we're going to have to notify the, the property owners that they have lead service. What comes next is anybody's guess. Nobody from either the Department of Health or the. Being forthcoming with, with the next. So this is part of our. The DRI project, but they are relocating hydrants as part of the scope and we're giving them, providing them with new hydrants and valves so they can update utilities. While they're doing it. So this is them cutting out an old 50 year old valve. And it's just ready to go and install. We're a little short. You can see this is down in a hole. This one would be buried. And so we just put a riser on it. And so this one is, it's in service, but it's been moved so that way it will accommodate the new bike path. Just in preparation of the new school year, so these were put out, these bike extensions on Paddock Place. You know, there are two of them in a box of 500, so it's like 250, $275 each. We put four of those down. Here are the no parking signs for the neighbors that decided they wanted to park on the road. The, also continuing with our stop bars and crosswalks. So this is at Carroll Street. And I guess the question last week was how much does $10,000 buy? So there's, I'm not going to go through the whole list, but I gave, provided a list of where we'd upgraded stop bars and crosswalks. But you basically for $10,000, we got 10 crosswalks updated and about 60 stop bars. We probably have near 100 crosswalks already in the city. And, you know, stop bars are probably two to three times that. So, you know, it, it gets us, you know, keeps us maintaining them, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't keep us maintaining all of them and it's, and it doesn't really account for new ones. So also we've been doing the striping of the no parking throughout the city. You'll see the yellow cutting up. And as we get questions about these little paths here. So National, this is where National Grid installed the new gas main. They've done restoration. But right now they're milling on Third Street. They're going to be milling and paving on Fourth and Warren over the next week or so. And then once that's all done, then, then their striping contractor comes through and fills in all these little blanks from there. So they'll be, they'll paint new parking spaces and new, no parking space to the Warren Street as well as, you know, anywhere they cross a, crosswalk, they'll replace it as well. Some tree work in Seventh Street Park. You know, this is a part of a larger topic is we've, we've had some turnover. We got a lot of new staff. So it used to be that this is the route for the sweeper and everybody just knew which routes and what's day. So we're kind of going low tech and whenever they, the new guys come in to run the sweepers, they take whichever day it is and it tells them what street to go on. We've done the same thing with, with Plow Route. Very Street Bridge. So they've started doing the retaining wall. And these are for the approaches. So you can see, you know, you get an idea of how high the road is going to be. You know, it's going to be up, you know, where these guys are standing, well above that. The, they left a little sample there on Tom's desk. There's a little bit of this kind of moon rock. It's actually, it's actually a a synthetic glass product. It's a synthetic rock and what it does is it has the compaction of regular aggregate, but it's extremely light. So that way we aren't putting a lot of weight against the, the abutments that were just poured. Because there's nothing to restrain them, you know, they're not lagged in. So that's there. We also have, that's, that's the, the rock there. And we also have. Bearings are pushed out, so they're going to actually fab, fabricate, they're going to construct wooden bearings so they can set the trusses, which are ready. That work shall take place probably next week or the week after. It will take place overnight. But once they get the trusses set and the bearings are coming, they can actually jack the trusses up, move the wooden bearings, install the new ones. And then they can proceed with. Getting them. And as far as the cemetery, this is, so the grant money you guys got or CSC got, these are the weed whacker. We've got pole saws. This happens to be a chainsaw here. But a lot of the expense goes towards batteries because the batteries last for about an hour and since they work eight hour days. You know, we got to have about six or eight batteries for each piece of equipment so they can cycle through with them. But they started using them a couple of days ago and, you know, it'll just be a work in progress for the, for the next month or so.
Rob, are they more quiet?
I don't know. I haven't witnessed it myself. I'm assuming they are because they don't have a little two cylinder engine in them. But. You don't get to, the people in the cemetery don't tend to complain about noise too much.
But yeah, thank you very much, Rob.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, council members, questions?
Good question. Rob, thank you so much for filling the parcels at the park with, I think around Oktel, there is a couple, two, if you, whenever you can, chance. But I noticed National Grid, the roads are in pretty rough shape. What do you think, when are you going to, when are you making the map on which roads to attend next year?
You asked, are we talking about National Grid? National Grid is milling and paving their roads now.
Oh, they're doing, okay. But how about the, the ones that they're not affected by National Grid? When, when, when are you actually making the schedule?
We usually do it, you know, in May or June, put out a bid.
May, June, okay. All right, thanks.
Other council members?
Rob, I just got two questions. That rock that they, that, that's what they're using?
Well, that's, that's going to be sub base. So you will, you'll never see it. It'll be underneath, it'll be underneath the road, but it's what we're using to create the sub base.
That's mean, it's just amazing. It's like, it feels like a toy. I mean, it's, it's so light. So in terms of the, the lead, the lead piping, right, is there, do you know the properties that haven't? They, you know, knowledge, do you actually know the properties?
Yes.
So is there a way to cross represent that to SDRs or sales, sales, you know, being done, you know, any of those of those properties so that we can?
Well, we've done it. We've gone through the tapbook. We've used the app. We've gone door to door. You know, it's really, it's, you know, we don't expect, you know, there's, there's going to be a, a percentage of non-compliance. It's just the way it is. Some people just aren't going to be bothered to give us the answer. So, you know, like I said, we're, we just continue. We have a grant that covers these expenses, so we're going to continue to, you know, try as many, you know, direct ways to correct, ways to make direct connection. But in the end, we know that there's going to be a lot that are just going to be unknown. And by the way, it's going to be every municipality in the United States of America is going to have tons that are unknown.
No doubt, yeah.
Other council members? Public?
Hey, Rob. This is Hugo. Just want to say this is super informative and very entertaining. And I think you should start a YouTube channel and you'll be famous and be able to monetize it. Thank you very much for all the great work.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
So the only two pieces of business left is to get an introduction and a second first for the law related to the regulation of tow truck operators. Introduction in a second. Ron? And then introduction, the second to the, don't, Margaret, you want to?
Yeah. So I, can I just give my report from the. Yes. I don't know, Logan, if you want to let me share my screen or, or I can just read it. It's very screen. No, no, this is the report. You don't have a copy of this. I have to read it.
I just want to make clear, there was some confusion at legal meetings about refusal. I did not ask anybody to refuse themselves. Vicky had previously volunteered to refuse herself. And that was not required. It was her choice and it's up to her, as it is in all of you. Thank you, Margaret.
So last week, nine for legal committee met. In attendance, Dominic, Remy, myself, Jenny was absent. The discussion of short-term membership law was postponed for a future meeting. And our discussion focused on the New York State Good Cause eviction law. Documents available for review included local laws from six municipalities that have opted in to New York State law, a summary memorandum from Crystal Tech regarding the law, and email communications received after members of the community, the full text of the law. All of those documents I've reached have been posted to this Tuesday night's meeting as well. A recording of the meeting is available on the City of Hudson website. The committee discussed the following aspects of the law. If Hudson opts in, there are only two revisions that can be made. Definition of small landlord and the its 10 or more units New York State version adopted in New York City. And the threshold of percent above market that defines lovely tenants. Potential negative impact for tenants seeking an apartment. These are topics that were discussed. Would include increased bearing of work history references compared to force. Also, this was potential increasing rental units available. If small landlords elected to exit the market, and one of the good cause reasons for non-renewal of lease or ongoing letting a month to month apartment is taking the unit out of the, out of the rental market. Provisions for rent increases do not address increasing property taxes. And we discussed that, that that would be something that would have to be performed as a reason, a reason for going beyond the eight and a half percent. Non-renewal of lease language allows tenants remain indefinitely. While the landlord property owner has few options to opt out of renewing contracts other than taking the property off the rental market, which went to grease out and stuff, or reacquiring the property for personal or family use. Those are the issues we discussed. Other issues discussed by the committee included our lack of information on the number of units in the city. How many would be exempt and of those not exempt? One is the breakdown of the number of landlords and how many units fail. So not really have a good sense right now of the landscape. Exemptions include units that are rented based on income. Units with certificate of occupancy on or after 112009. So that would be either new buildings or buildings that had significant construction work done. And then got a new certificate of occupancy. In addition to written comments submitted to the committee, the public was awarded the opportunity to speak. Two speakers, not from Hudson, but representing tenant rights spoke in favor of opting in. One speaker from Hudson outlines the negative effect of the law could have on rental market in reducing available units and making the application process for rent community more rigorous. The committee decided that the decision regarding opting in should be followed for discussion with the full council without recommendation, recommendation from the legal committee. Further, the committee deferred to the full council again without recommendation regarding definition of luxury slash above market units and definition of small landlord. So Rami, Dominic, is that any revisions you want to make?
I think the only thing is, if I heard it correctly, you said 10 or more, second 10 or less for this small landlord.
Thank you.
Right.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. But the New York City uses 10 and the six municipalities that have opted in use one. And they range in the range for the luxury apartments. They range, I think, from 145% of the market all the way up, I think this was 304. So there's a range. So that's the report. I will send it to Tracy for filing and that's that.
So we'll give you an introduction in a second and then we'll open up.
Where are we?
Introducing in a second in the law.
The law, okay.
So I will be accusing myself. So I think I need to leave. Correct?
I will be recusing myself also due, due to ethical and moral. Since this, as a tenant, this may affect me. And I don't think ethically I should be in the discussion. And even though I have strong opinions on the benefit question. And actually, who said that? Who's her?
I thought you just wanted to.
What?
I thought you just wanted to.
Oh, was that too obvious?
But you're not, you're not after it, but oh, not effectively, are they?
Yeah. Be like yeah.
Last week?
Okay. Snobster, you say snobster?
This is a snobster.
Okay, we can start the discussion tonight and and you're bringing it on council.
Yeah, I have a couple of items that I want to share. The report from the committee tried to summarize objectively what we discussed. I was a tenant for 25 years. I rented in New York City, Long Island, New Jersey, Texas. I've rented in many different scenarios. And one of those was a rent stabilized building on Long Island, which was provided with protection in terms of rent increases without impinging on the landlord's rights. I have concerns that this law as written will have a negative impact on tenants. And I did have a discussion with an individual after the meeting last week who agreed that yes, this provides protections to people currently in a rental unit. But it actually will make things more difficult for somebody trying to get a rental unit. If small landlords decide to exit the market, it is unlikely that new landlords will commit to Hudson to bring in more units. The more likely to move to say Greenport or other municipalities rather than coming into an area where there's this kind of restriction. And the other negatives that I foresee, which did not occur in my rent stabilized arrangement. If someone's putting an apartment on the, on the market, tenant has left it on the market, they have every incentive to price it at the maximum amount that the market will bear. So I would foresee for any new tenants coming up, a potential increase in the in the amount that it's going to go for. In the rent stabilized scenario, and there's nothing in the law that prevents that. In the rent stabilized scenario, even if a tenant left, there was a limit to how much the apartment could be rented for to a new tenant. So I see that also as potentially negative for tenants. I think that also there will be no incentive or no reasonable way for a landlord to be willing to take a risk on a tenant who maybe doesn't have a very, very long work history or great credit score. Because they will be essentially entering into an agreement over which they have no control as to when it will end. They, I think that that one, that's really going to be a problem for some of the people that we are trying to protect with this. And fundamentally, as we, as we talked about in our meeting in the legal committee, we don't have enough information right now about exactly how many units there are, what the landscape is. Many are own house, you know, just a landlord has one unit. And many is a case where they have two, three, four. And before we can make a decision, but I have to set up threshold, I think we should have that information. So personally, I am not in favor of this law primarily because I think it will actually be negative for tenants in the long run. That's, that's my perspective.
Thank you, Margaret. Any other council members?
As someone who's been on both sides of this, I can agree with Margaret that my fear is as someone who was priced out of every single apartment I ever lived in before I bought a house. And now I'm a landlord, I would be exempt from this law because I live in my building and I, I rent to one other person. But I, I'm scared that in trying to do something good, we may actually be doing the opposite. And I, for the reasons that Margaret's already stated, the one that really sticks out to me is having to renew a lease over and over and over. That would be the most scary from the perspective of a landlord, I think.
Actually, with this law, you wouldn't even have to have a lease.
Yeah. What's the point of a lease?
Yeah, I mean, it's unlimited lease. I mean, that's not right. I mean, it's not right for landlord, but it's not right for tenant to have things. But we should put like, maybe, I don't know, this is
it's
We should put some like, not like, that time, maybe some periods like five years, something like that, or maybe, I don't know, like year to year, maybe five. Still is too much, five years.
Crystal, are we not to modify?
No, the only thing that yeah, no, the only thing that can be modified is the definition of the small landlord and the market rate. That's it.
Exactly, that's what I want to hear.
What about these landlords that are like not playing fair? What about the small town and how a lot of people are losing housing? I think a lot of those people they are referring to are already exempt from this in some ways and they don't care.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're getting more data about exactly who owns what and of many units would help us make a good decision. So are you talking about landlords who are like price gouging and raising your rent by 30%? That kind of thing?
Yeah.
I mean, this law is specifically designed to protect tenants. That is the one thing that is designed to protect tenants. But because it doesn't address the fact that when you leave or make your life so uncomfortable that you leave, I can now turn around and increase the rent by 40% because unlike rent stabilization, it doesn't say if this person stays there, you can raise the rent by X percent every year. Or by the way, if you're putting that unit back out on the market because the tenant left, there is a cap on how much extra you can charge in the rent. That's how stabilization works. This law doesn't do that. Which I think first, I think the law has a lot of flaws, quite honestly.
I would rather see something like rent stabilization than the way that this this rent.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. What would be the possibility of defiling your own law that suits your, your own? Is it difficult?
It's very difficult because anything about rent control has to be approved by the state.
This is, well, there was a couple of years ago, there were attempts to put in and what happened was that those laws were challenged in the courts. Municipalities attempted to put in their own. And the reason municipalities, as I understand it, are opting into this is that this is now a state law. So if there is any, and there probably will be challenges in the courts on various aspects of it. So probably, Crystal, you can correct me if I'm wrong with those towns, just probably be to this, at the state level. And municipalities have a certain degree of protection. So that's, that right of the own law would not be ours.
Definitely. Anyone else?
I just, who is it? Are the, are the large renting buildings that are coming on now in Hudson, would they be part of this?
No, they would automatically exempt.
All of them will exempt. They're all exempt.
They're all exempt. So, so really it's, it's more focused on small landlords. Who, who is it for?
It's us.
Who does it apply to?
It's plenty of people more than, well, it doesn't, it's not clear. We have to select how many. It depends. Most municipalities, as I said.
Part of the problem is we don't know. Because we don't know, Michelle did put some information together, first preliminary information. But we do not know how many units in Hudson would be exempt. Of the ones that are not exempt, what is the makeup? And many of them are, we have landlords who have 50 units that would not be exempt. Are most of them, is the makeup mostly landlords with four or five units that would not be exempt?
Would not be exempt for?
We don't, we don't have that thing.
Oh, I see.
I don't know.
We have to pick a number.
Yeah.
That's the one thing that's open to the municipality, whether it's just one unit or up to the ten.
And others, other towns that chosen one. So the issue is, is because you're saying you don't want to vote on this law because there's a possibility that it may hurt tenants in the long run?
I personally contest as a bad law and as a tenant, I won't know. So I just want to, I want to answer the exempt question again. So the certificate, any new building going up, if the certificate of occupancy was issued after January 1st, 2009, those buildings are all exempt for thirty years. And so and that, but it also implements a building that underwent major rehab, et cetera, and then had a certificate of occupancy issued recently, right? So I mean, it's based on the certificate of occupancy. That's one reason. That's one of the exemption reasons. The other is that any unit that is rented relating to, that has provisions or restrictions related to income is exempt. So there's a lot of stuff going up in Hudson right now that would be exempt.
If I, if I may add to what Margaret is saying, that is a potential loophole as well. So for some reason, people have a house that they no longer want to, you know, be governed by this good cause law. They could take it out of the rental market and do a rev haul. And they have a new certificate of occupancy and now it's no longer in the rental market for people to be able to afford.
Someone come tomorrow or someone here.
Right, if they decide. Right, right.
Could then
Which, which do you, like, for example, if you own and like rent to your next door, you're probably not going to do that because you probably can't afford it. But somebody who owns 10, 15 properties may have the capital to do that. And then potentially just to get out of this good cause overarching law, they could potentially do that too. So those
It just seems to me that not 10 or 15, but say, I'm, you know.
It has to be, yeah, over 10 because otherwise they wouldn't.
Six or under, something like that. Because it seems like if, if the smaller landlords are the, are some of the only ones that are getting done by this, then it takes out that, that sort of possibility of somebody building, you know, a livelihood. It's sort of, oh, the big guys get to do it and the and yeah, it's sort of that, that sort of imbalance again where well, it's kind of just sort of the, the middle gets sort of stuck.
There are plenty of landlords who have one, four, six.
Um, yeah, I'm really curious to find out. So
I don't, actually, it's on, yeah, I'm not going to go into it right now. We'll go outside. Do you have help city now? Crystal, is there anything, any misinformation here or are we on track?
No, you are, you guys are perfectly on track. Absolutely. There's nothing I need to correct.
Thank you.
I have another question for Crystal. Crystal, have, have you in your research found out, found anything to say that if, if a landlord wanted to take their apartment offline, how long they could do that or by, before re putting it online and, and raising, potentially raising the rent to something ridiculous?
So there's not a timeframe that's set in the law. With the standard that's set in the law is that it has to be a good faith basis to take it offline. So what this is going to end up being is it would end up having to be litigated if it came down to it. But there's no, there is no hard and fast timeframe in which it can be taken off and put back on. And I, I do expect that this is something, there's, there are going to be a lot of different aspects of this law that are going to be litigated and that you're going to start seeing a trend set by the courts that are going to provide a lot more guidance for both landlords and tenants as to what needs to be followed and what are these parameters that are going to be reviewed.
Thank you, Crystal. Hugo Van Veren would like to speak. Have your hand raised?
Hey, Tom, you're going to address me as the friendly neighborhood immigrant as I've instructed you many times. So first, the, this law is clearly not well designed for the City of Hudson's scale as you all enumerated just now. The simple rhetorical question I would leave you with in addition to reading my letter that was submitted by Tracy is that the City of Cambridge in Massachusetts, which is older than the Republic of America, it has a similar housing stock, had similar policies voluntarily on the books, and it destroyed their housing market particularly in the middle and bottom. And then they had to remove it. And once they removed effectively rent control and onerous stabilization infringements. and onerous stabilization infringements on private property owners, they saw not only an increase in public and private housing, but they also received tax revenues that they could use to then make the schools better, make the infrastructure better, and attract public-private partnerships. So my simple question to you is, um, can you write out for us, or explain to us at the next meeting, why the city of Hudson, with six thousand people, and Tom, you heading this committee, knows better than the city of Cambridge, which has some of the world's best architecture and, and urban planners, and a very diverse economically, racially, and nationally immigrant community? Why do we know better than they know? And why have we not reviewed the fifteen years of studies in Cambridge and in other Hudson Valley cities, which prove that in the long term, rent control harms those that it tries to help, and that there are other, better, or cheaper methods of increasing affordable housing?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Um, hi, everyone, my name is Robin, um, I'm with a graphic organization called For the Many that works on housing justice issues in the Hudson Valley and across the state. Um, and we helped pass the Good Cause Eviction Law statewide earlier this year. Um, so I just want to clear up a few, a few things. Um, first off, just want to appreciate y'all for having this conversation, and that everyone in this room wants to do what's best for tenants. Here in Hudson, um, and we're deliberating on the best way to go about doing that. Um, the first thing I've mentioned is, you know, at least here in the United States, when good causes or similar protections have been enacted, there's no evidence that that has reduced the housing supply. Um, in the state of New Jersey, they've had good cause evictions statewide on the books for years, and they're actually outpacing York State in terms of construction of new housing per resident. Um, so there's no evidence that it reduces the housing supply. Um, and good cause eviction is not meant to be punitive for landlords. Landlords have the ability to raise rents every year by eighty-five percent, plus CPI, which should be around eight point four five percent in the city of Hudson, and it also allows them to raise rents even more than that. If there's a reason, like property taxes or maintenance, et cetera, they just need to justify that to a judge. So landlords are still within their rights to make a profit, to show them their rights to raise rents as they see fit. Um, something I noticed is good cause strengthens the quality of existing housing by giving tenants the ability to ask for repairs. A big reason that, you know, a lot of our housing stock might be, you know, falling into disrepair because tenants are afraid to ask for those repairs, this would give them that security to ask for repairs every year for Rachel, especially for more marginalized communities. Um, good cause will increase economic mobility for tenants by allowing them to, to do longer-term planning, right? If they know that their housing is secure for several years, it'll allow them to take risks, like start a business or choose to build roots in the community. Um, it gives tenants that, that ability that they don't have right now, because they're constantly worrying that they might lose their housing next year. Um, as something to note is, like, landlords still have all sorts of ways to not renew a lease. It's not perpetually trapping the middle lease, right? If they choose to reclaim the property for personal use, they can do that. They choose to take the property off the market, they can choose to do that. Um, this is not trapping them, uh, you know, forever from this contract. It just gives tenants a right to renew unless the landlord has a reason to not renew. Um, and I think someone mentioned rent stabilization, we support rent stabilization, it can be great. Hudson ups into rent stabilization, and we're working on statewide legislation to expand the number of units covered by rent stabilization. But the unfortunate thing is, right now, rent stabilization only covers a tiny fraction of the housing units in Hudson, and so good cause is the way to cover the rest of the tenants. Um, and considering that, it was what we've been hearing earlier, is larger buildings and larger landlords will be covered by good cause. Um, and just, good cause also does not exclude buildings that have been renovated. Um, the certificate of occupancy thing is something that's like a little bit unclear, but as the Corporation Council mentioned, that will be litigating with the courts. Um, and we do hope the state passes legislation to, to make that a bit more clear, um, moving forward. Um, and something I always notice, like, this obviously is not, or this legislation, we were pushing for universal statewide good cause eviction this last legislative session. The state legislature decided to boot that back to municipalities to decide on yourselves. Um, so it's unfortunate the state made that decision, but, you know, the reality is, it's up to municipalities to protect tenants. This, this legislation is not going to solve the housing crisis, we still have a lot of other things we need to do. But it's one tool in your toolbox to protect tenants that currently have housing in eligible units. Um, we urge that you do so, we urge that you set a portfolio size of one, to make sure that you cover as many as possible, um, so.
So I just wanted to comment on the certificate of occupancy thing, because, you know, I had gone through the law very carefully, and I actually had that discussion with our council, um, uh, when I was reading the law. And it very clearly states that the definition, you know, the exemption is for anyone with a certificate of occupancy issued after one month, two thousand and nine, that's how it's written. And as, as Rami has indicated, if you, we have a building, uh, and we get a new certificate of occupancy, then that would be exempt. There's a building directly across the street from me that underwent major, major renovation over the last five years, and they have new certificates of occupancy. For other reasons, they may have been exempt, but that's a case where that would be exempt. So, you know, there are things like that in the law that I think are problematic. And, you know, I think much of what you said tonight, you also said in our legal committee meeting, and we talked afterwards. Um, I think you are aware of some of the things about the law, they're not great. Um, with regard to the landlords not locked into this in perpetuity, well, they are unless they want to take the, the, the unit off the market, or they want to use it for the family. Otherwise, the tenant gets to say when they will terminate the contract. For me, you know, just on a philosophical level, if I, if two parties enter into a contract voluntarily, um, it shouldn't be allowed that one of them, and only one of them, gets to dictate when that contract will end. And the other basically is entering into something where they're relinquishing any control over when they want to exit that relationship. And tha- that's fundamentally flawed to me. I should be able to, you know, at some point be able to say, look, I, I don't want to continue with this contract. But, you know, in, in all the years that I've rented, uh, taxes have no controls of any kind. I even have your experiences, I never lost, I never lost an apartment or, um. You know, it just, to me, there are things in here that would make it very difficult for young persons starting out to get into an apartment. You and I talked about that. This, this will not help people trying to get into apartments. One of the great things that I liked about renting was mobility. So that if I got a new job that was thirty miles away, I could move, I could get closer to that, or if I, if family expands, you need something bigger, you can move. This is going to put you in a situation where moving is not going to be that easy.
But what about the people who are already in there and want to stay?
It does protect those, that is the one thing that.
And that's the reason why this law, the state is kicking it back and allowing local towns to take, to protect the tenants. So it's like, we have issues with what's written in the law, but when are we going to make change for the, to protect the tenants' rights? Because at some point, at some times in life, I mean, I've seen landlords kick people out just for asking for repairs. I've seen landlords increase the rent just to get the people to move, because they know they can't afford it. It's, it's not, it's not right. It's not right.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and it does protect, and it does protect.
Well, I'm referring to being in an apartment, I agree with you there.
And Mark, with just one point of clarification, my other concern.
Oh, well, where are you turning, please? I'll let you know.
When you're ready, Tom.
Okay, where, can you hear something, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, you go, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, the, um, if you read it closely, well, so first, I think we're all on the same page, so we want to have renters be protected within the law. Um, one other additional concern that might be litigated in this law, all the way to the Supreme Court, frankly, is that, um, it might harm, uh, older citizens or retirees over sixty-five and disabled people, since they have a separate carve-out in the contract. So it'd be rational for someone that would want to have the flexibility to change who they rent to, to discriminate against someone that is disabled, or discriminate against someone of a certain age. And I'm particularly concerned about that, because Hudson, as you know, has a large retiree community and several specific groups that service, um, folks who are differently abled. So for that, and the twenty other reasons mentioned, I think.
Tom, I'd like.
Litigated for years, and to be implemented, not quite figured out, and that will not. Go ahead, Mark.
You went, you went in there, you couldn't hear you.
I heard you.
Hello?
I heard you. Nice, Tom?
Sure.
Um, the very issue that you raised, because there is a limitation in the law that while, uh, uh, a landlord good cause for taking the unit off the market and ending a lease is if you want to reclaim that unit for use of yourself or a family member, and no other unit is available in the building. Um, you can do that unless the tenant is sixty-five or older or disabled. Uh, and, uh, the very issue that you have brought up was brought up to me, um, by a resident who was looking at the law and saying, this would make it very much an incentive for landlords to choose not to rent to the elderly or the disabled, because even if they wanted to reclaim the, uh, the unit for their own use, they, they can't do that anymore. And that, I think, yes, I think that is, obviously, that is illegal to discriminate on the basis of age or, or, or disability. Um, but proving that might not be that easy. And I, I do think that potentially creates a problem where landlords will not want to have the elderly or disabled rented. And that, that, I had not thought of that, that was brought up to me actually by a resident who wanted to discuss this with me.
Yes, my, uh, lawyer's person.
It seems like there's some easiness that the judiciary process is going to work its way through, and we don't actually know where we're going to wind up. And I'm just curious, maybe Crystal can offer an opinion as to how long it'll be before these issues get determined fully with resolution? Crystal?
That's going to take years.
By three, four, five?
I, there's, there's, it depen- it depends, it depends on how, how quick, you know, how, how quickly it gets, gets litigated and what levels of appeal it goes to. I mean, litigation can take years, especially going through an appellate process, so it's going to take some time for the questions that are not clarified in the law to be clarified by the courts. And that's always subject to change, too. You can have a, a court decision, and then it could be interpreted in a slightly different way, or be based on circumstances, so it's going to take a while.
Superintendent Musson?
You know, I find it hard to under, you know, the reality is, we don't really know exactly what we're talking about. We don't know the numbers of how many small landlords exist in Hudson, so it's very, to create a law around something we don't understand seems bizarre. Um, I am a landlord, I have helped many, many people come to Hudson, have had the opportunity to rent and stay and create businesses, et cetera, et cetera. And that door, I think, would be closed, uh, if all these restrictions were put on the small landlords. And in reality, to go before a judge and to how to administer this, and the illness of one of such a small city, with so, with a relatively small housing stock seems to be overwhelming for our capacity to even handle all this stuff. And it would certainly discourage people from being a landlord, I think. And I understand that that is an issue. I've watched Hudson for many years, and I've seen people being mistreated, abused, et cetera, et cetera. And I, and I think that is definitely an issue that is a concern, but I think that many of the landlords that I've watched over the years, long gone, uh, who have done such, made such difficult circumstances for people.
Well, that's, it's a lot of housing that's not available because of landlords that came up and took over property and increased the rent, and made people have to move out because they couldn't afford the rent, so.
Yeah, I'm talking about the people that created housing that was really not suited for people to either have. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on line? Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, here we go. No.
Well.
Can you get, are there other members out there?
Then we turn. Or outside? Outside.
Oh, motion for a time.
Well, looks like, uh.
He said he was.
I didn't know the door was locked.
Do I have to sign anything?
Yeah.
Did you? So.
Be in touch.
So what, where are we going?
Well, the customer, you can, uh, the people come back to the new terminal.
Okay, I know. You have to find out somewhere.
Some way. Yes, most. There's a news thing. You walk away from a deal. I'm going to get a ride home. One time, somebody's there, I don't know. We both get. I haven't found him. I don't know where he went home, so. It's going to take us a while. You didn't find him.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second. I wasn't there during the sixty-five.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. You decide to. Our. You were thinking that, uh.
You were thinking that uh.